All right, if I could have your attention, we're going to call together the call to order, the regular meeting, Monday, December 19th at 7:00 PM. And could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Graham Mejia, here. Councilmember Kusamoto-
Here.
Councilmember Poe-
Present.
Mayor Protem Edgar-
Here.
Mayor Stevens-
Here. We will be having the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Poe, followed immediately by invocation by Councilmember Graham Mejia, so if you would, please stand and remain standing.
Place your hand over your heart and please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you so much for being here with us. We ask for your guidance and for your protection in going into the new year, that we have a blessed year, and bless Los Alamos and all of its residents in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right, the next item on the agenda is, we do have a presentation tonight, and it's a presentation of commendation to Wink Chase and Patty Laird from the City Council. Are you here? You are. You know, I started reading over the presentation at all the different things that you've done, and it's really remarkable what you've done in the community and for the community. And so, we're going to go through this right here. Commendation, Patty Laird and Wink Chase, and they're our community partners. Whereas Patty and Wink are real estate agents with Keller Williams Realty and are dedicated to the good old-fashioned customer service and loyalty, which has earned them top honors in the industry, including Real Estate Hall of Fame and the Platinum Club Award. And whereas Patty attended California State University of Long Beach and majored in physical education with a major in business, and Wink attended UC Santa Barbara, where he majored in English and playing intercollegiate tennis and rugby. Now, that one stopped me right there for a minute. It's a good mix. Whereas Patty and Wink realize that it is because of their community that they are so successful, and they happily give back in any way they can. Some of their charitable causes include Casa U Shelter, Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County, Garage Sales, Donate-A-Phone, and the Coalition Against Domestic Violence, Girl Scouts of America, KW Cares, Toys for Tots, and National Charities League. And whereas Patty and Wink are Certified CERT and are founding members of Organized Community Emergency Volunteer Association, a nonprofit group that promotes disaster awareness and preparation. And whereas Patty Laird loves to be in the outdoors, passing out flyers in the neighborhood, hiking, camping, or hanging out on the beach, she is an outdoors lady who is also great at karaoke.
A little too much research.
Your friend there might have pulled in there.
It was okay, Dylan.
Yes. No demonstrations tonight, please. Loves to play volleyball and is addicted to her grandchildren, Summer and CJ. And whereas Wink, Tyler, it's not on there. You have a new one on here.
Yeah, five months.
Fantastic. Whereas Wink Chase is a huge fan of the ocean, who loves to run on the beach as the sun comes up, and walk on the pier at nighttime. One of his passions is playing with Summer and CJ and Tyler, and teaching them the grandfatherly lessons about life. That's one heck of a lineup of things both of you have done, and so, really, it is an honor for me right now with this last part. Now, therefore, I, Kenneth Stevens, Mayor of the City of Los Alamos, do hereby commend and congratulate Patty Laird and Wink Chase for their many contributions to the city of Los Alamos, and how much I know you're going to continue on in doing these things, too. So congratulations from all of us. Thank you.
I would just like to add, it's not in there, that these two people have been so good and very instrumental in the fundraising efforts that we've had at St. Isidore Historical Plaza. We would be at a huge loss without the two of you, so we hope you hang in there with us, but thank you so much for that.
Now, we also have another presentation, and it's going to be from DeVita Business Overview, presented by Ann Mintani, okay, Regional Director, and Ken Fuch, Divisional Director. So if you would, please come on up.
Hello.
Hello.
It's a pleasure to be here. Mayor Stevens and Mayor Protem and members of the City Council, we're grateful to be here, and we just wanted to give you a quick rundown of who we are and what it is we do. I'll handle the first part of the presentation, and Ann will talk about the most important part, which is the clinical part. We're a clinical company. In fact, DeVita is an Italian phrase. It's a derivation means basically giver of life. And what we try to do at DeVita is to give life on a day-to-day basis to our patients. And so, if we can go to Slide 1, we're going to just break it up into three sections, an introduction as to who we are, and what we do clinically, and our approach to patient Go ahead, please. So DeVita is a Fortune 500 company, actually Fortune 400 now. We're in 43 states. We don't have employees, we have teammates, because we're village first and a company second. We pay a lot of attention to the care that we give our patients. We've had a great opportunity recently to open a new clinic within the bounds of Los Alamos, and that's why we're here, to tell you a little bit about ourselves. Our mission at DeVita is to be the provider, partner, and employer of choice. It's a simple mission, and we spend all of our time trying to meet our mission. We also have core values, seven of them, and if you can go to the next slide, you can see what our core values are. Actually, go one more slide. Thanks. Our core values are important to us as well, and this is what we use as guidance on a day-to-day basis to care for our patients. Next slide. Okay. So we, in an attempt to care for our patients, we do a lot of things. We've recently gone international, predominantly in the India area and also Singapore, Europe, and in the Middle East, in an attempt to spread what we do in caring for patients all around the world. But predominantly, we're a US-based company, and we have gotten lots of accolades, next slide, from various companies praising us for our efforts in the area of clinical and also in training. Part of being the employer of choice is to bring together the best and the brightest of our healthcare community in order to give the very best care possible to our patients. And the neat thing is that we actually spend a lot of time training our patients, and that's why we get a lot of accolades for our training efforts. So for instance, we have teammates that require master's degrees and bachelor's degrees, but over half of our teammates are actually high school graduates, that we train extensively to deliver care. And so, we try our best to hire from the local community and to bring in people and train them and help them to care for our patients. And so, we're excited about that, because we're community-based in our care efforts and in our training. Want to talk to you about clinical now, and I'm going to turn it over to Ann for a few minutes, who is a clinician herself.
Thank you, Ken. And as Ken had mentioned, we are clinical company first, and company is really second, and we are very passionate about clinical outcomes. And if you turn it to the next slide, please. So, sorry, go back. So DeVita has what you call a DeVita Quality Index, and we call it shortly, for short, DQY, and it's really a proprietary DeVita benchmark. We're in, we measure several clinical metrics to make sure that we are looking at every single mark to make sure that we deliver the right patient care, and all of which are albumin adequacy, anemia, mineral bone disorder, which is a collective of phosphorus, calcium, parathyroid hormone, or PTH, access, and our gold choice is AV fistula or arteriovenofistula. And we are doing well in decreasing our central venous catheter, which is not the choice. Also vaccination, which includes flu, pneumonia, and hepatitis. So I'm going to be talking about the different clinical indicators, and again, fistula in use. We at DeVita are actually leading this particular benchmark, and we're very proud to say that at DeVita, we use 50, we are at 57.5% compared to our competitors at 53%. So we continue to set the standard in increasing our fistula rate, which is the access that the patients use, and we use to cannulate and access the blood that we clean at the centers. Vaccination, as I've mentioned, we are driving this, and we've done a remarkable job in driving it to 90% for flu, to take care of our patients and keep them away from the hospital. Pneumonia is also another piece that we track, and we've, again, done a remarkable job in comparison to the rest of our industry. Other key leading indicators are phosphorus, and we would like phosphorus to be between 3.5 and 5.5%, and again, at DeVita, we are leading at 57%. Calcium, between 8.4 and 9.5. Again, we are the leaders in that particular metric at 70%. Albumin, albumin is important, because we would like our patients, again, to be out of the hospital. With albumin, we want their protein to be much higher, so that they, again, it's an indicator for mortality. So we are at 40.7% compared to 36% in the industry. And adequacy is a measurement of how well we clean the patient's blood, so that they can, again, have a better quality of life, and for this, we have improved 60% in the last 10 years. Again, fistula rate, we're 83% have been improving dramatically, and with the central venous catheter rates, we are at 17.5%, again, the leader in the market. And why are we talking about this? Because we believe that we can provide the best quality of life for our patients, and in doing so, by constantly improving on our DeVita Quality Index, or what we call the DQY, we're able to decrease our mortality rate, and we have done so by 15% in the last nine years. So, Ken, I'll turn it back to you.
Very technical, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a very sophisticated industry to be in, and it takes a lot of training, and that's why it's exciting that we can take people from the community and train them in this very, very technical area. We are helping people whose kidneys have failed, and once, if your kidneys fail, there's very few options for you, and it's a chronic disease, and it's a terrible thing to have, and it's wonderful to be able to bring in members of the community and train them in such a way that they can care for these patients. We develop very deep relationships with patients. They're there at our clinic for four hours a day, three days a week. In some cases, our teammates spend more time with their patients than they do with their own families, because of the significant commitment it takes to care for these patients and the terrible amount of time they have to spend. I mean, if you think about it, your kidneys work 24/7, right? And so, 12 hours a week on a dialysis machine is about the best we can do. So it's a terrible thing to have this condition, but it's wonderful that we've been able to bring in the community and to care for these patients in a way that will improve their lives and strengthen them and help them have a quality of life that they would not have had otherwise. So we do that by providing all the care, not only just for the patient, but the whole continuum of the patient's needs. And so, if we can look at the next slide. We add various different additional services, providing their prescriptions, that they are delivered right to the clinic, and it just adds to their convenience. And that's one of the things we really try to do, is just be as convenient as possible for the care of the patients. They spend a lot of time in our clinics, and we really want them to have the best experience possible. We're excited, we just opened, we have patients, we are glad to be a part of your community, we're excited to be here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and just thank you so much for welcoming us to your community. We're grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the council, and Councilmember Mejia, do you have some questions?
Just a comment, if you don't mind, Mayor. It's been a long time coming, it's good to see you finally here. I'm really pleased that you work with the community to bring people in, to train them. I think that's an added benefit, and I just wanted to say welcome, and since we won't see you after, have a happy holiday season.
You do the same, thank you.
So much.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to echo those sentiments. Thank you for sticking with the community, being here, and the local hires, and I see a good relationship between us, this community, and you, and, you know, thank you for being here. Happy holidays to you, too.
Thank you. Same to you.
Councilmember Poe.
Thank you. I had the pleasure, along with our City Manager, Jeff Stewart, to be at the ribbon cutting and the opening of DeVita. That was about, what, about three weeks ago?
November 18th, to be exact.
Okay. And we invited them at that time to come, because I think it's really important for people in the community to know a little bit about the businesses that come here. I would, my preference would be that any new business that comes to our community, come before the council, introduce themselves, tell a little bit about what their business is, so that people in the community can be well aware of it. Having had experience in my family with a father that had to have dialysis, I truly understand, I even understand what some of the things you said, the technicalities of it. So knowing that there was not a facility available in the area, had to go to Long Beach for that, I really value the fact that you're here and available to people in our community. I think that it, our community is better for this. It was a long time coming, we know that you were in the queue for a long time, but we're certainly glad that you're here and welcome you. Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you. Anytime we can get a Fortune 500 company coming here, Fortune 400, we want to congratulate you on that. For the community's benefit, you actually started this journey 2007 or '08, if I remember right. I was just on the council, and probably not for talking about tonight, but as a business-minded council, we're very interested to maybe do a postmortem on the 2007 to 2011 journey, if there was things as a city that we can do better to continue to attract Fortune 500 companies here. Our hospital expansion and some of the stuff that we voted on over the last year, you know, we're hoping to attract companies like you guys here. The hospital employs over 1,000 people, it's an important part of our community, having a company like yours in here is a really significant piece. I'm really appreciative that you're here. Any one of us, as councilmembers, if there's anything that we could do to help you promote your business, I hope that you get in touch with us, we'd like to help. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as comment, Ann, and you can weigh in, too, I can just tell you that the healthcare industry as a whole is struggling with what changes are coming our way. The problem isn't the change, we just don't know what it is. And there's a new health organization that doesn't exist yet, but it's supposed to exist by January of 2014, and we're not totally sure how to accommodate it in every way. And so, what you'll see is companies like ours and other healthcare-related companies, we're kind of watching to see what the future looks like, so that we can plan and move ahead. You guys have been wonderful since day one. I wish there was more you could do for us, but we're just kind of waiting to see what the future looks like, so that we can actually accommodate it. We were confident that we can accommodate it as soon as we know what it is.
Right. Thank you, again.
I also wanted to say thank you, and, you know, over the years, I've known quite a few people that had to go through dialysis, and it's not comfortable. It's not comfortable for them, it's one big inconvenience, I guess, all the way around, and I know that DeVita stands head and shoulders above most places that do provide that service. And it's not only the service you provide, it's the way you do it, and it's the amount of compassion, the amount of one-on-one concern that you have for your patients, too. And this is the feedback that I've gotten from people that have gone to DeVita and other areas and avail to the services. I welcome you as partners in our city. I think it's going to be very beneficial for both the city and for you, too. And when I heard you say that you're going to be hiring from within the community and training from within the community, that's wonderful. We couldn't ask for anything better. So again, welcome to the City of Los Alamos. Continue the perfect service that you are giving to all of your clients, all of your patients that come in there, and anything we can do to help support you, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Phone's ringing.
I know. All right, I understand there is another presentation. City Manager, did you tell me that there was someone else that had a presentation?
There's some people from Acacia.
From Acacia?
In the back.
Is there someone here from Acacia that? Come on in.
Mayor Stevens and councilmembers, my name is Judy Dickinson. I'm from Acacia Adult Day Services in Garden Grove. I'm the Development Director, and what we're doing is, we're calling it Acacia Awareness. And we're going around to the different cities that we serve and letting the council, the citizens, know that we exist. Acacia has been in Garden Grove for 32 years. We offer adult daycare programs, adult day healthcare, and we have a new program called Acacia Secure, which is a small program for individuals with early-stage dementia. We're open from 7:00 AM in the morning until 5:30 PM. We help individuals function at their highest level while supporting their families. We also offer three support groups for the caregivers. Currently, we serve 126 participants from 15 cities in Orange County and parts of LA County. We average 75 individuals per day. In the past year, we have served five participants from Los Alamos. We offer transportation with our program, which is through OCTA, St. Anselms, and Abrazar. We also have a new transportation program called New Freedoms, where we take individuals who do not come to the center specifically and provide transportation to them, non-emergency medical transportation. We offer meals, activities, physical and occupational therapies. We also have a "we," and we have a brain health program for individuals in the secure program, as well as for individuals such as any of us, who want to keep our brain active. We are, we have many volunteers, and our volunteers believe strongly in our program, and one individual actually put a fundraiser on First Giving and tried to raise money, and she was actually able to raise money, and we were able to buy two tablets, which my partner Debbie has to show, and the individuals love participating with that. Some individuals are afraid of the computer, but yet they will go to the tablet, and especially if they see somebody else doing it. So we really feel strongly in promoting brain health. I have brought brochures for each one of you, as well as some for your resource table, and I also have a packet of information. If anybody would like to come on a tour, we would be glad to have you. It's very difficult at times to understand what an adult daycare is, until you see the program in action, and you see the participants, you see the staff, and you just see what a warm feeling that we offer. If you would like to come for a tour, we would appreciate it if you would call us, and we will show you around. Our telephone is (714) 530-1566, or individuals can go to our website and learn all about Acacia and the process for enrollment. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for what you do for the citizens of Los Alamos.
So, just ladies on the chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right here. Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to continue on with oral communications. Any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker, and I will ask the City Manager and possibly the City Attorney to please take notes on any questions that anyone has. First speaker, please.
My name is Richard Newman, Mayor Stevens, members of the council. I'm here representing the current Orange County Grand Jury. First of all, I want to thank you for having public comments on early in the agenda. You don't know how much that helps. I have sat through several council meetings and not been able to make this little pitch until middle or end, and it's nice to be able to get in and get out. With that, we're in the process of recruiting for our replacements. We've been in on the panel now for almost six months. The grand jury will disband on June 30th, and between now and then, we will be recruiting. The courts will be interviewing and selecting another 19 members to constitute the new grand jury, and 19 members and 11 alternates. The grand jury has two purposes. The first and probably the most commonly known is criminal. We do assist the district attorney by returning indictments in selected criminal cases. That takes about 20% of our time. The other 80% of our time is spent conducting civil studies into issues affecting city and county governments and special districts. The application deadline for 2012, 2013 is January 13th, just coming- coming pretty quickly. After the applications are in, there's a screening process that lasts until April 26. At that time, a panel of judges will select 30 nominees from the list of applicants. And on May 12, a drawing will be held to select 19 jurors and 11 alternates. I don't need five minutes. That really ends my presentation. I do have some information packets that I would like to leave that I'd ask for you to make available to any citizens that may be interested in learning about or applying for grand jury service. And I'd be glad to take any questions that you may have, but otherwise, that ends my presentation.
All right. Are there any questions from Councilmember Graham Mahia?
No, none. Thank you for coming.
All right. Councilmember Kusamoto?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes, I do have a question. What would you say would be the average length of time per week that you spend or per day?
We, that's up to each grand jury to decide, and it kind of depends on how much work they take on. Our jury is meeting five days a week, 8:30 to 5:00, although we don't have to stay until 5:00. And I would say the average would be about 3:00. So, we're spending close to full-time, about 3/4 time, I would say.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem Edgar?
Thank you.
Yes.
I actually have a question. Do you have any requirements for people?
Over 18 and a citizen. Beyond that, you need to have the time available for a year, which limits most people. We tend to be, as you notice, an older group because we're all retired. Although occasionally, if there's a stay-at-home mom or somebody that, an empty nester that's able, has the time to devote, then we do get a younger person now and then. We really are looking for more diversity. Our current grand jury has no ethnic minorities, which we think is wrong. And we are recruiting very heavily in the Westminster and Garden Grove area to try to promote more Asian interest. And I think we, we scored a couple of, of good recruits in that area.
Very good. Mr. Newman, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. All right, next speaker, please.
J.M. Idler. First of all, I'd like to wish the council a very happy seasonal time, and I hope you're enjoying it. I sent an email regarding planning commission request 0905 on the Cattell Corridor. I don't know if everyone received it. It went to citycouncil@ci.losalamos.ca.us. Basically, on 5/8/2009, it was an item, agenda item 9B. And it was, the planning commission was requesting that the city council appropriate funding in the 2009, 2010 budget for preparation of a commercial overlay zone along Cattell Avenue. The commission strongly feels addressing this issue in the immediate future would solidify the city's economic future. At the time, the compass blueprint was still going on, and this was tabled because of the compass blueprint. I've asked a couple of times for this to come back. We're now in the middle of doing our general plan. We can easily throw this into the general plan with the council bringing it back for discussion and recommending that part of the general plan include the overlay zone for the Cattell Corridor. The overlay zone would increase the potential for that corridor to generate tax revenue dollars and sales tax dollars for the community. It would increase the potential value of the land across the corridor for the landowners. It would benefit the city. And while we constantly refer to a downtown, that corridor right now has potential that is not being tapped. And I think it would benefit the city to bring this back, bring this back to the council. It's been a number of years, and find some way to fold this into the general plan so that we can get this overlay accomplished to the benefit of our community. I'd like to thank you very much. Again, have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Richard Murphy. First of all, I'd like to thank Jeff for his time here and working with you. It's been a pleasure. I'm sure you'll be bell flowers gained to get you. I'm here to talk about two items. One is 9A. By my math, we're losing, we're changing one person and hiring three. And I would just like you guys to, when we get there, to explain what it is. And it seems like if Angie was doing all that work, you were underpaid. And maybe still are, but the other item is 10B. And I stand before you, due to circumstances actually beyond a lot of your control, four of you have a conflict of interest in this lawsuit. The one member who doesn't is now going to recuse himself. To me, that, that's just beyond belief. I would request that the councilman reconsideres his position, and I would also like to request the other four of you to refuse his recusal. He's the one independent vote that we have in the meetings. We don't, we don't know what goes on back there, and we're counting on all of you to work for the city. It's a very tough position, I realize that, that, that we've been put in by, by the whole process. But to lose, to lose his voice, to me, just, just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any additional speakers?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dean Gross, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce. I'm on the Board of Directors. I'd like to extend holiday greetings. Happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas. On January the 7th, the Chamber of Commerce will be holding their inaugural. It'll be a little different this year than it's been in the past because it's going to be part of the Wake Up Los Al breakfast. So it'll be at 7:30 in the morning at the courtyard by Marriott. That's on Friday, January the 6th at 7:30. Our new president coming in is John Osborne, a local businessman, and we'll be recognizing the services for the past couple of years of Judy Klebo, who's the outgoing president. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing no additional speakers, we're going to bring it back to the council. And we're going to move on to item number seven, register of major expenditures. Can we please?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Graham Mahia?
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Aye.
Councilmember Poe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Edgar?
Aye.
Mayor Stevens?
Aye. We're going to move on to item number eight, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item A, make a motion to move the remainder.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, item A.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like it noted for the record, Wendy, the, the concern I have about the inconsistencies or the lack of information within this new form of minutes for the official record, which is our agenda, and that it concerns me for moving forward for the current council and then the future councils to make sure that the history is well documented. And that's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And with that?
I would, I would like to go ahead and just break it up into three parts, or actually two parts. One, as far as regular minutes, the other one, special meetings. I would like to abstain from those as I was not present. So...
And I'll do so for the last two on item A, 8A, one I was here for, and two and three, I was not part of the closed session.
I'll go ahead and move the item with those changes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 If I, if I may, on item G, I wasn't quick enough here. I just had a question. I'm, I'm in favor of item G, but I did have a question, if I could, about the roof.
Aye.
Okay, and my, my vote, Wendy, is no. For the meeting minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the ones that I'm qualified to vote for.
All right, all right. And so you had one abstention? Okay, all right.
Two abstentions in special meetings.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Councilmember Poe had one quick question.
Yes. A couple of meetings ago, there was talk about the roofs and the fact that the, the bids came in high and they had to be put, they were going to be put out to be bid again. And there was a comment that, when the question was asked, how long it's been since the roofs were, were repaired. And the comment was that some of the roofs had repairs that were only guaranteed for five years. And that is my question. I, I think this is fine, what we're doing, but is this a Band-Aid? Or are we, are we going to be, are these roofs going to be all right now for at least 15 to 20 years?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the repairs that are going to be made are on certain areas of roofs. In the community center, we have a couple full, full repairs that are going to be made. These repairs will be guaranteed longer than five years, but to give it like a 20-year warranty would be kind of tough, depending on, you know, with, with the weather we've been having. But yes, definitely a longer than a five-year repair.
It's not just a Band-Aid.
Correct. This is a full, this is a full repair.
I think what's interesting, what, what should be noted on this is that they're actually repairing the underlying material instead of just the tiles that cover it, which should give us a longer roof. But I think Mr. Brian DeBrey, in 11 years from now, when we're redoing the roofs, I don't think he wants to be held accountable saying 20 years.
Well, well, I understand that. No, I understand that. And I, and I read all this, and I, you know, with the under fixing, and it should be, but I just, I was so, I guess, offended that we would even do some kind of a Band-Aid repair, spend money on that that was only good for less than five years, because here we are, back again. So I just wanted to make sure that this was, you know, something that was going to have a longer life than that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. That is the end of the consent calendar. At this point, we are...
Do we need to vote on it again?
I, do we have to? I think we already voted.
I think we opened it. The council already took a vote. I think we're good on that.
Yeah, I'm not changing my vote.
Discussion, it's fine.
Very good. All right, end of the consent calendar. Now we're going to move on to item nine, discussion item, restoration of assistant to the city manager and recreational manager, I'm sorry, recreation manager position. Can we have a staff report on this one?
I think this is a toss-up. We both worked on this. Let me start by indicating this is a reorganization that comes about due to two things. One, the appointment of Ms. Avery as the city manager. And second is the change in structure in the Recreation and Parks Department. And quick answer to Mr. Murphy's question, which I think has been asked in the community a couple of times, is, no, I think that the city council, and certainly I feel that there's a lot of faith in Angie's skills to get this done, and we're not adding a position there, is, what we're adding a position for is to backfill the responsibility for, for human resources. And in, in return for that, they're underfilling or not filling a manager position in the Recreation and Parks Department. It's, we all have our strengths and weaknesses. Ms. Avery's, of course, is Recreation and Parks. Mine was Human Resources. So, the fact is, I, I kind of worked as the Human Resources manager while serving as city manager here. It's a skill set that not everybody has. Conversely, I, I know very little about Recreation and Parks, and Angie does. So, what we're really doing is trading a position and getting help for her on the Human Resources side, and the Recreation and Parks Department benefits from her expertise there. So we're trading off that position. So we're not really adding bodies. It's just a trade in skills, is what we're going with that. And what we have, Angie, go ahead and finish up your appointment.
So essentially, the Parks and Recreation Department will be losing a full-time professional because I'll be moving to the city manager position. So, in order to carry on, you know, and serve the community, Corey Lake and Recreation Supervisor will be promoted. Council action is not required for that, but that's part of the package. And then the other part of the equation is Ron Noda and Emmeline Moya, who everyone knows, will also be promoted in this equation. And so what you have here are three dedicated young professionals who will be doing the work of four. And the trade-off is that I will receive some help in the office of the city manager by hiring a new employee, and that recruitment will start sometime in January.
And the net cost?
The net cost is about $7,500 annually.
All right.
And with that, we recommend the staff recommendation on this to go ahead and approve the position, the one position that's added to or restored to the roster, basically, and authorize staff to go ahead and begin recruitment for that.
Very good. Before we bring it back to the council, are there any additional public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the council. Councilmember Mahia?
No, just make a motion to move the recommended action.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional comments? None? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Didn't hear any. Moving on to 9B, reorganization of Community Development Department. Can we have a?
In the never-ending quest to save money, I think what we have here is a, out of the creation of an absence in the, in the Planning Department, Mr. Mendoza, again, who has been here for better part of four years now, has developed a decent amount of expertise, believes that he can carry on the same duties that he had with an associate planner, now with a planning aide position, resulting in a substantial savings for the city. Mr. Mendoza, do you have any?
If I, if I could expand upon that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for some time now, we've been operating without an associate planner. Before filling the vacancy, I wanted to go in and look at what the market might bear today and also hopefully realize some savings. We came up with a way to save approximately $26,000 annually. The position of planning would fulfill our needs in a cross-section of code enforcement, planning, advanced planning, current planning, business licensing, permit issuance, a jack-of-all-trades, really, instead of just in the planning function. The department used to budget that position for over $63,000 in salary. We're recommending to budget that at $43,000 in salary herein and realize the savings, the $19,000 in salary, and then the benefits would be a $6,300 savings. However, a portion of that will have to be reserved for the potential unemployment that would have to be paid for that position. And with that, we're recommending the adoption of a resolution that approves the position and the job description.
Very good. City manager, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, I think it's an excellent idea, and we recommend the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that has any, any, any comments on this at all? All right. Bringing it back to the council, Councilmember Mahia?
Sure. Steven, if you would, because we've not addressed this in the past. We had an assistant planner, is that correct?
The most, the most recent title was associate planner.
I'm sorry, associate planner.
We had an assistant planner. Before that time, that person was elevated up to an associate planner.
Okay. So then, the hierarchy is an aide, an assistant, and then an associate?
Correct.
Okay. And so are there any differences in the ability for them? I, I imagine the experience, one, is going to be something, maybe some education. But is there anything that the aide can't do that the others can?
Usually, someone at a higher level would act more independently of the director and need less guidance.
Okay. And I did some checking around because, like I said, we haven't had any kind of changes to this significance. Is this person able to stamp plans, or?
Yeah, from a planning point of view, not from a building permit point of view.
Okay, so not from a permitting point of view?
Nor would the associate planner have the ability to stamp plans from a building side either.
Associate would not be able to do that either. Okay, so then we're, we're straight across the board, we're getting the same kind of service with that?
Absolutely. At the counter, absolutely.
Okay. And now, do we, I know that we're involved in OCOG. Are we still involved with that now that the person who was here before is no longer here?
I've been monitoring it. I haven't been participating actively in it, but we monitor it. We get... it, we get the emails, we participate in feedback when they're asking for local cities' feedback on items.
Great, so they do allow us feedback, even though we're not at the meetings? Okay, perfect, so the feedback's taken care of. Okay, and then, is this position considered a responsible position? When I was calling another city to get some information, they said that that was essential. And if you could explain what that means to me, and if this meets that qualification?
Not sure what you, what you mean. Is it an essential function?
No, there's a, as far as the governing body that oversees the planners, let me see if I can find that in my notes. The American Institute for Certified Planners, there's some terminology that someone gave me, I'm not really sure. Like I said, this isn't, this isn't my job. I'm just asking the questions to make sure that the city's covered. Should we move forward with an aide as opposed to, you know, potentially an assistant?
I think what you're asking is the position required them to be AICP certified?
The terminology was specifically, and let me give it to you so I don't say it wrong, a responsible position. And if you don't know what that means, I can understand. I'm just trying to follow up on the, on the documents that I did. Okay, great. So then we're going to make a considerable savings. We've got someone who's capable of doing the job. It's not going to put the city at any kind of risk, having someone that's maybe a little bit less qualified?
Yeah, perhaps, but it's certainly capable. Planning aide can certainly earn an AICP designation. That's a matter of completing a number of courses and attending a number of functions among the planning group. It's a, frankly, it's a discretionary involuntary designation that's not required, but desired among some. It's a title.
Sure, sure. No, I'm just wondering, because if we're going to move forward with this, I want to make sure that we have enough. I know that your area has been said to be a little shorthanded for the last year or so. I want to make sure you're getting what you need, as opposed to, if you need something a little bit more, we could discuss that tonight. That's all.
I'm quite confident that there are underemployed AICP certified planners out there that we will be, that will be part of the application process.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Kuzumoto?
Oh, I just wanted to get clarification. So the savings, can you, can you walk through the math on the savings over the...
Sure.
Okay.
What you had was an associate planner that had sixty-three thousand dollars budgeted for salary and twenty-six thousand dollars in benefits. And the planning aide is proposed to be forty-three eight ninety-five in salary and twenty thousand one hundred and ninety dollars in benefits.
Okay. Wow, so that's quite a downgrade then, in terms of salary then. So, but there'll be people at that qualification level that you think will be applying for this lower position?
Absolutely.
Wow, and this will be forty hours per week, kind of a, well...
It's a full-time position, yes.
Okay. I know the questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Poe?
Thank you. In, in reading this, I guess I can, all I know, I can say that I was actually quite delighted that we have a staff that is, that is really looking at what this community needs, how it can best serve the community at the lowest possible cost. And I think that that's, that's, thank you for doing that. I think that shows that, that our staff really does care about our community, not only that they're, that they give good service to the community, but that, that we stay within a balanced budget and we're able to come in with these kind of actions. So I would, I would say I'd like to move, have we had a motion?
No.
I'll make a motion for the recommended action.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional comments? Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yeah, just real quick. You know, this is, the last two items that we're hearing are really good for the city, and I think it has, it's an effective decisions at the policy level that we are trying to achieve up here in the council. I think each one of us are trying to get into a level of detail that, you know, from my perspective, is maybe a little bit too low. I think that the biggest thing that we do up here is approve salary ranges and leave the discretion of the qualifications to, to yourself. I would also say that we probably get more feedback from people that are very interested in having friendly people that work at that desk, and that will help be, you know, pro-resident and try to find ways to complete projects, not try to find ways to derail them. So I would just say, continue the good work. The savings is important, but I think this is probably one of those positions, too, that the community really cares about getting the right person that's customer-friendly. And with that, like I said, I'll second.
All right. I think the only comments that I have, I wanted to thank staff for being so creative in, in the savings, you know, that you're projecting on this, it's going to be a substantial net savings. And along with a lot of other people in the community, I think whenever they come up to that counter, they're interested in speed and the accuracy that we, we do in our city. So, good job. And I know it's going in the right direction. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right, at this point, we're going on to item ten. And somehow I think this will be the last item that I ever call out. And before I do it, I wanted to thank the community for allowing me to be your mayor for a year. And I hope that I did justice to the position. And as we stated in the State of the City address, we've had some interesting times. And I think we all kept focus on what is best for the city, taking it through these interesting times. I've had a great deal of support from my colleagues, from the staff. And like everyone else, I hate to see Jeff leave, but I also know that he's leaving it in excellent hands with Angie and her idea for staffing for the future to come over the next few years. It's an interesting trip. I know we could have gotten a lot done this year, a lot more than we did, but we, we did have some interesting times. And I'm going to leave it at that. And I wanted to thank my wife, who is sitting in the audience, Rosa, for putting up with, with me, with the long nights and all of the different functions that we have to attend, everything that we have to do, and for messing up a good majority of the house with a lot of paperwork. Standing line in my family is that we will never, ever have a meal at the dining room table again, because it's loaded high. So, thank you. And thank you for the patience, the love, the support that you and, and my son Andrew, if he was here tonight, my campaign manager also, gave me over the years, because whenever he saw me slowing down or something, he would say, Dad, pick up the pace. And so he held my feet to the fire also. And again, a big thank you to the community. The intentions are good on both sides. Progress is still going to happen. And this may be a small city, but it's a fully loving city that's going to operate and survive very well. So, that's it for me. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the clerk and say, Wendy, you're in charge.
Thank you, Ken. Councilmember Ken. Okay, at this time, we're going to open up the meeting for nominations for mayor.
I'd like to nominate Troy Edgar.
And I would like to second that.
And I'd like to nominate Warren Kuzumoto. Okay, so the first nomination we have is by councilmember Poe for Mayor Edgar, or I'm sorry, councilmember Edgar as mayor. We're going to do a roll call vote. Councilmember Graham Mejia? No. Councilmember Kuzumoto?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, vote passes for Mayor Edgar. I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Edgar.
Great, thank you. At this point, what I'd like to do is to take nominations from the floor for the Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to nominate councilmember Graham Mejia.
Okay, we have a second for that. Okay. If only for a second, I'd like to reopen up the floor. Is there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Marilyn Poe.
I'd like to second that. Okay. Is that a roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Yeah, councilmember...
Councilmember Graham Mejia?
No.
Councilmember Kuzumoto?
No.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar, yes. Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes three-two. What we're going to do, did you have some, do you have public comment there, Jan? Okay. At this point, what we're going to do is we're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to celebrate Mayor Stevens' year. And just a couple of comments from my seat is that, you know, as you can tell, Ken is significantly understated in his contribution to the community. He's a very humble man. So I just wanted to add a couple of things that some of us, as we've been fighting this, this year through, trying to get things done for the city, you know, I think that, you know, Ken, you were at the helm during one of the toughest financial times economically. I think you provided great leadership through the budgeting workshops, and we're very appreciative for that. I also think that, you know, in this year, we approved a $200 million hospital expansion. And, and again, I think that was under your leadership. It didn't pass unanimously, but you pushed through, and it was, it was a tough process. We kicked off the general plan this last year, about a $530,000 project. Our general plan hadn't been updated in decades. Again, this is council under Ken's leadership, but that was really needed. You know, one of the comments that was made earlier was that, you know, taking a look at potentially inserting a commercial overlay. But there's a lot of community input that's required in that type of a process. I've been getting a tremendous amount of encouragement and compliments in the community, the people that have participated in the general plan process. Ken, we want to thank you for that. And then lastly, kind of a personal project for myself, was the downtown revitalization and really trying to get that project up and going. We did run into a couple of roadblocks on that. But again, you know, as you could tell, anybody in the community could see, you know, Ken is a very stable, consistent guy that just continues to just push things along. And I think it's his wisdom and his steady hand that we're going to miss. And so, Ken, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
With that...
What?
Okay.
Sure, we can do that.
Put a stamp on it and send it to me, would you?
I'm going to do this.
Kind of a tradition in our city is that, as the outgoing mayor, we always present a plaque that basically is the gavel. Ken has been more adamant on smacking that gavel down, so if, when you come into here, make sure you know when the meeting starts. But I just, you know, Ken, on behalf of the City of Los Alamedos and all the city council members up here, we just want to thank you for your service. We really appreciate everything that you've done. Rosa, I would just like to give, the community to give you a hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we also have presentations by local legislators that have arrived and are in the mail. So we have, I think, one tonight, and we have three more coming. So I'd like to present those to you as well, from Assemblymember Silva.
Oh, picture.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, but this is from the assembly, a certificate of recognition, Ken Stevens, for his dedicated public services mayor 2010, 2011, presented by the City of Los Alamedos, and signed by Jim Silva.
Thank you. And thank you, Jim. I know you're out there somewhere. And again, you know, I don't, I don't know what to say. I know that we have a lot of work we still have to do as a city council up here. It's wonderful to get the awards, and they'll, we'll find a special place, as soon as my wife tells me where it is, to hang them up and cherish them forever. But we are handing the city over to a new mayor, and Troy, I know, is, is going to continue driving the city ahead in a perfect manner. And I know with the Mayor Pro Tem, as councilmember previous, now Mayor Pro Tem Poe, who has been in the city for so many years, we're going to continue driving it forward. Some of the cost savings you've seen tonight in staffing is a mentality that has been fostered by this council, and the ball was picked up by staff and ran with it. I know that's going to continue on. We are going to have a balanced budget. And I know that'll happen, along with continuing to have new companies, new businesses come to our community, like DeVita, that we welcome, and also never drop one thing whenever it comes down to providing the services for our community. Earlier today, we had the honor of swearing in a new officer in our community. There aren't too many cities around that can say they're expanding their police department or going through training programs for officers and putting them on. Our chief did it here. And we will continue to do that and help the city grow. I'm not going to say anything else, because I'm not the mayor anymore. So I'm going to give it back over to the mayor. Thank you.
What we want to do is, we want to invite the community, everybody that's in here this evening, there's a cake that was brought in, and we're going to take a ten-minute break and celebrate Ken's tenure here over the last year as mayor. And we just invite everybody to stick around. Thank you very much, and we'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you. Meeting back to order here. We left off, we're on agenda item ten B, and the subject is councilmember participation in closed session matters regarding the lawsuit between the city, the city and the citizens for a fair trash contract. I'm going to, city manager, could you give a staff report, please?
Yeah, what I have here is just a matter of clarification. At the, if you'll remember that after the last regular meeting, we were in a closed session, councilmember Kuzumoto sent a letter out to the mayor recusing himself from that. I received several questions from the community and staff about the recusal. I, I didn't see a clear conflict of interest in the letter stated. I couldn't explain it, frankly. So what I have here is a clarification, basically. The agenda is just here, talking about the section of the code that applies, and I'm just looking for clarification on the, on the point and the reasons why Mr. Kuzumoto recused himself from the item.
Great. Before we get into, going into this any further, I want to go ahead and open up public comment. Is there anybody in the public would like to make any comments at this point? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close it and bring it back to the council. Start with councilmember Graham Mejia. Do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Actually, I'd like to ask that we go to Warren first, since this directly affects him, and then defer my questions to after that, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Okay, councilmember Kuzumoto's next. Warren, did you have any comments?
Well, you know what, appreciate councilmember Graham Mejia passing it over to me. I will say, I believe I was perhaps a bit hasty in recusing myself. I did get some clarification from the city... I did get some clarification from the city attorney in terms of reasons for recusal would be conflict of interest or biased prejudice. And then, of course, if one were to fully read the city code on 2.04.230 and favor to vote, it also says, "A council member who abstains from voting without a disqualifying conflict of interest or has biased prejudice thereby consents that the majority of the quorum may decide the question to vote upon." So that was where I was really coming from in my heart. But again, on speaking with the city attorney, I, I believe I was a bit hasty. And with that, I will go back into closed session, and I believe that kind of closes this issue and requires no further discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Poe, or Mayor Pro Tem Poe.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, Warren. But I would like to say that, as most of you know, I was out of state on our last council meeting, December 5th. The following day, I received a phone call explaining that Councilmember Kuzamoto had given a letter to our mayor, Ken Stevens, and the press, and to the press that was present. I was in absolute disbelief when I was told what the letter said. In my tenure on this city council, going back to 1995, I have never seen such an egregious and unethical act by a council member as this. Not only has...
I would like a point of personal privilege, Mr. Mayor.
You know what? Just let her finish. If, what's your point of personal privilege? Is there something...
Ethics. She cited something on ethics.
She's stating her opinion based on what she'd heard.
It's bashing. He's already agreed to go back into the session. Is this necessary, Mayor?
Everybody's gonna have a turn.
Everybody's gonna have a turn to bash.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
Not only I believe that Councilmember Kuzamoto has abdicated his responsibility to residents in the community who elected him, but he has violated the Brown Act in the most deliberate manner. Sandy, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. What are there areas that we go into closed session about?
Are you asking me under state law, what are you authorized to discuss in closed session?
Yes.
Personnel matters, litigation, real estate negotiations, and certain types of safety risks and emergencies.
Okay. How does the Brown Act apply to closed session?
That's a rather broad question. But fundamentally, the Brown Act allows for the council to meet in closed session, to discuss certain topics, assuming those topics are agendized and the correct safe harbor is identified. And then it provides for the confidentiality of closed sessions.
And could you expound a little bit about confidentiality in closed session?
The Brown Act requires that information acquired in closed session be maintained confidential.
Okay. Did you advise Councilmember Kuzamoto prior to his first attendance in closed session regarding the Brown Act and a possible conflict with the lawsuit filed by citizens for a fair trash contract? And if you did, what was his response as far as a conflict?
I don't think I can comment on advice given to council members in a public setting.
Okay. All right. The Brown Act is what we as elected officials are governed by. That's what we live by. It's hard, it's hard. It's not an easy thing. Occasionally, a council member will, in a conversation, slip up and, and, and say something to someone that wasn't in closed session, but that's a slip-up. This was not a slip-up. It took a deliberate act, and I quote Councilmember Kuzamoto's letter, end quote, "after careful consideration." So it was considered, it was thought about. And then he sat down and typed this letter and distributed it. On item two, he reports that he is in the minority. This is reporting to the public and the press what has taken place for the past 11 months when there was a closed session regarding this trash lawsuit. On item number three, he states, he reports that another council member has stated in closed session, a clear undefensible violation of the Brown Act. He states, "As a current council member stated, there are citizens in our community that have a belief that I should not be participating in closed sessions concerning this matter. I sincerely appreciate the council member's candor, and I take no offense to this belief by some of our citizens." But you see, that is a disclosure of a statement made by a council member in closed session that clearly is, is breaching the confidence. We have all been, we sent Councilmember Kuzamoto, and we've all been to what I always call city council school, where we all have been in sessions about the Brown Act. We've been through ethics training. We have to have a certificate, a certificate of that every two years, and I believe that Councilmember Kuzamoto has turned that in. We need to know if there's a two-conflict. If there is, then why has Councilmember Kuzamoto been in the first nine closed sessions regarding the trash contract and now absent from the past three? Clearly, this is a matter that needs to be dealt with. I've, there have been many times in the past that I've, sitting on this council, I've been in the minority. I've been in closed session, open session, and I knew what the outcome was, but I never abdicated my responsibilities to the voters of this community. I never decided that just because I didn't like what was going on, I wouldn't come or I wouldn't vote. You can't do that. It's just not right. We have an obligation, when elected to office, to represent the electorate in all matters and obey the rules we are governed by. When we violate this obligation and those rules, there should be a consequence. In the future, I for one will not be able to go into any closed session on any matter with Councilmember Kuzamoto without the fear that I can't really say and be honest about my opinions because they may, it might be breached in the public because of what has happened here. I'm very sorry that this has happened, but those are my feelings about it.
Is that it, Marilyn?
No, yeah.
Okay. I'm next. So, couple of things. You know, as we start talking about this and somebody says, hey, look, you know, Councilmember Kuzamoto says, look, I, you know, I may have been hasty and submitted the letter and, you know, I just want to take that back. But, you know, the challenge that I had with this issue was, just to kind of go back, Marilyn's out of town, we're getting ready to go into closed session, we're getting, you know, we're on the verge of some pretty big developments in the lawsuit. And I'm out talking to the folks as we're getting ready to excuse going to closed session. And, and all I see is Warren handing out envelopes to the press when I was out there. And I thought he was probably handing out, you know, some sort of invitation somewhere, and I wasn't just invited. So I just kind of sat back and looked at that and went in the back room, and all of a sudden, it was just Ken, myself, the city attorney, and the city manager. And I was just trying to figure out what's going on. And the letter was addressed to Ken and, and to the press. And, and, you know, so at that point, the professional courtesy would have been that we could have had that discussion in the back room, and we could have talked about, you know, if Warren didn't want to participate or he was having concerns. But this is the only forum where we can have a public discussion, because we can't have this sort of discussion to talk this thing out, you know, outside of these chambers. We have to bring this, we have to agendize it, we have to be able to talk through. So, City Manager, I appreciate that you have done that. I do understand that Councilmember Kuzamoto has now said, hey, look, I take it back, I was hasty in the process. But, you know, just a couple of things. You know, when, when I first read the letter after the fact, and I couldn't ask the questions because I, you know, I'd already talked to a council member, so to be a Brown Act violation on my side, you know, one of the first questions was in the letter, and even in the press, because the press had reported on it the next day, is that he recused himself. So I kind of went back. Now, recusal, so there's two areas of dilemma that, that if you're sitting in the unknown, what was his intention completely? You know, it's now been a couple of weeks that we've had to try and figure this out without having the benefit of having this open discussion. The issue is recusal or excuse. You know, is he excusing himself out of the back room because this is an item, as Marilyn said, he just didn't want to address? But he specifically had put in here that it's a recusal, which has a legal term that, again, has to have a disclosed conflict, and I didn't see that in the letter either. You know, based on that, you know, I went back and I said, well, what could be his conflict? And, you know, just, you know, for everyone's purpose, I went back and, you know, some of the people in the community, he put, you know, Councilmember Kuzamoto had put in his note that he was really concerned that people, that one of the council members and people in the community were telling him that he didn't belong in the back office, in the back room when we were going through the discussion on this lawsuit. And the issue was that, you know, because the person that's suing us, Art DeBolt and J.M. Ivler, had actually made campaign contributions to Warren. So I went back and polled, and, you know, I've got copies up here, too, of the 460s and the 497s, the campaign contributions. And so basically, what we've got here is, we've got the contribution on October 25th by Art DeBolt, the guy that had sued the city, and we've, we've got a campaign contribution to Councilmember Kuzamoto. And, and then you see the lawsuit filed the same time. So the question keeps getting asked in the community, did, you know, did, did Warren's, one of his biggest campaign contributors actually, you know, is involved into this lawsuit? Should Warren be back there? You know, if you look at this lawsuit, you know, and you look at it, from my perspective, and it's well documented, the issue for, for me being brought into this lawsuit was, I took a campaign contribution four years prior to us voting on a contract, and I was, had the appearance of a conflict. Here, you have Councilmember Kuzamoto receive a campaign contribution, one of the biggest ones in his campaign, and three days later, a lawsuit's filed, and now, you know, for the next year, he's participating in this closed session, saying, I have no conflict. And then in the end, I get a letter that's addressed to Ken, saying, I've got a, I want to recuse myself. So, you know, for a couple of weeks out in the community, there's a lot of people that are looking at this, saying, you know, why did he participate for a year on this lawsuit if his biggest donor was Art DeBolt, that was the guy suing the city? And, and I think that that has raised a lot of concerns. You know, at this point, you know, in the letter, it makes the point that, you know, that I'll be there if the city council wants me there. You know, I would subscribe, this is not our choice. As Marilyn said, we're elected into this office. You know, out of the year that Councilmember Kuzamoto's been on this council, he's, you know, abstained from voting probably five to seven times. And out of the five years I've been on the council, I've never abstained a vote, because I feel that I'm here to vote, whether I like the issue, I feel confident or not. And so, to me, this was very disappointing. I would have preferred to have this conversation in private, where I was legally chartered to, but unfortunately, because the way this was delivered, there was no way to be able to close this loop and to be able to try to find a way through this. On the last item that I have, has to do with the Brown Act violation that I see, too. And you know what? I think that that is a very serious charge that was put into the letter. I think if you look at his letter that he sent to the press, into the mayor, yeah, at least two of the items that he talked about were only known to us in the back room as we were going through this. What is our positions on votes? What is our positions on his involvement in this? Those are things that were legally privileged to be considered in closed session, especially at the point when we're sitting back, trying to figure out. It's been now disclosed that we have done a movement to, you know, basically file an appeal and to start negotiations for a potential settlement, instead of do three more years of this. But the dilemma we had is, now it's just Ken and I in the back, and we, we're trying to figure out, can, you know, if Warren's in, can we, you know, negotiate with one person? Do we negotiate with two people? You know, the perception in the community is, if there's only three of us in the back, two of us shouldn't be involved in any sort of settlement, but legally, we, we could, depending on, you know, how we look at this, this issue with Warren's involvement. So it just, there was a lot of issues to be able to deal with, that it just, it really put us in a tough spot. Specifically in the Brown Act, though, you know, I don't think as a council that we could continue to, I don't know, hope that we're going to be able to have closed session where stuff like this isn't going to get out. You know, the, out of all the five years that I've been on the council, one, one issue that back in, you know, 2008, the council actually revoked the privilege to be in closed session and released everything talked about, because the council can do that. If we sat up here, unless it was a personnel matter and we wanted to talk about Jeff, or somebody as an example, and, you know, we wouldn't want to have that discussion in public, especially if it could potentially harm that person in dialogue. When we're talking about strategy with how we're supposed to deal with the litigation, this is the, when it's some of the biggest lawsuit that this city has had, it's been the center of a political divide, and we've got somebody that has self-selected out and in the process disclosed their position. If you read in the letter specifically, it talks about that, you know, hey, I'm, I'm always constantly voting in the minority, my vote doesn't matter anyway. No one's voting back there that's, when we're sitting through this and going, and, you know, when we come out, if we have reportable items, we have reportable items. So like I said, I really have an issue with this. I personally would like to see this thing agendized, to be able to submit this to the FPPC for further evaluation on the conflict of interest, as, well, more specifically, the infringement of the Brown Act violation. I think that at least two of the items on there are serious enough to look at. And again, we need to start setting the tone here, that we're not going to have this sort of an issue. It's already kind of dicey at the very beginning when we're sitting back. You know what? When, at the very beginning, even knowing Art DeBolt filed the lawsuit, even though Warren got a campaign contribution at the very beginning, you know, we asked in closed session, we were able to have this sort of a dialogue. I said, you know, Warren, do you have an issue? He goes, no, I really don't know anything about the lawsuit. I believed him. I mean, but, but even whether I believed him or not, the bottom line was, he's got a right and obligation to be back there, whether I said I don't believe him. You know, at, you know, 11 or 12 months later, opting out just really bothered me. So, you know, I would like to see an item brought back on the agenda for the next meeting in closed session, looking at the potential filing of this application with the FPPC. That's all I have.
And so I have a point of personal privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Warren.
So you characterize that I personally, individually, singularly received a contribution from Art DeBolt, and you know that's not true. You know, there were three of us on the campaign. You know that.
As a matter of fact, Mayor, I was the one who received the contribution.
Hold on just a second, Jerry. What? So I included the 460s, and they're up here for public review.
Thank you.
So you can take a look at that if you'd like.
Okay, so there are three, not one.
There is a, you ran on a slate.
Yes.
A contribution to the slate is a contribution to you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other point of clarification?
I think on the press, when you were asked, you said, "The purpose of the appeal and the reach out, the reaching out to the plaintiffs is to heal the city." So I wonder how this is gonna play in terms of healing the city? Let's think about that.
Well, okay. Councilmember Stevens.
Quick question for the city attorney. Does it make any difference if it's one person or three on the slate?
Well, I don't know that he...
It's for the... Hold on just a second, Jerry.
I don't know how she can speak regarding our campaign.
Jerry, please.
Can you stand her?
All, all the contributions are viewed as contributions to all of the committees. So it goes to all three.
All right.
It has some bearing on the amount or weight of, of the contribution, but all the contributions are contributions to all three when you run as a joint committee.
So in essence, it really doesn't make any difference whether it's one person or three receiving a contribution during this period. It was, to be honest with you, very disheartening for me whenever I did receive the letter. And, you know, I, I had to sit back and try to think, why? Why? You know, what, what could possibly be there? And I want to thank Mayor Edgar for going back and finding this, too, because this concerns me also, that we do have...
I'm sorry, I find that funny. That's all.
Carrying back on, it was disheartening, and whenever I see this, as far as where the donation was received and who it was received by, who happens to be... was received and who it was received by, who happens to be one of the litigants in the lawsuit, it concerned me. It concerned me that we've had our closed session meetings as long as we possibly have, and pretty much overshadowed by, I believe, timeframes that these contributions were made. There are many times whenever you're in public service where you have to do things that you don't want to do, and a lot of times, there are going to be uncomfortable decisions that we have to make. This was one of those times. I mean, we all have to make uncomfortable decisions and unpopular decisions at some times, possibly even upsetting some of the people that made donations to our campaign, like in this case. But it's all part of the job. It's all part of the public service that goes into it. Confidentiality is a major concern to me also, and when I first saw the letter, I had to, I had to question with the city attorney, "Where do we go from here?" And whenever I saw the two items from closed session that were brought forward, it sort of, again, really disheartened me more than anything else. I do believe that we do have to bring this back, too, and I would wait for the city attorney to give us more information, but something's wrong in this, something isn't right, and I'm concerned about it. And I'm concerned, like other people up here, that maybe our closed sessions are being compromised, and if they're being compromised, we have another issue that goes along with that. So having said all of that, I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor again.
All right. So the motion on the floor is...
Do I get an opportunity to speak now, since I deferred and let Warren go first?
Go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations, by the way, on your new mayorship. I'd just like to ask the city attorney a couple of things. City Attorney, when we talk about the Brown Act violation, and I'm not an expert on this, but this is how it was described to me, that as long as you're not discussing specific things that deal with the agenda item, then it's not a Brown Act violation. Did Warren ever speak specifically or in his letter say how he voted on specific votes or just in a general term? And if that's the case, does it apply to the Brown Act?
There, there is no reference in the Brown Act to specificity.
Okay.
But beyond that, I think that, as was requested, I should put together some legal advice on this and do an analysis and give you written advice as a council.
Okay, so the generality of the comment, not being specific to any one closed session, does that, to me, these are benign statements, and I will say that I have not been part of these sessions with Mr. Kuzamoto, but I know that before he came on as a council member, Mr. Edgar specifically, and our new mayor, Pro Tem Poe, were extremely, extremely bullying to me while I was in the session, which led to me doing some research that led to my recusing myself. But if Mr. Kuzamoto, as a new council member, sustained any of the kind of bullying that I did, I'm surprised that he didn't find a way to recuse himself at an earlier state. You know, Marilyn and Troy, you both talked about this, and Ken, you may have, too, about your concern about this, but we've had, as Marilyn said tonight, three meetings, and this was never addressed at those three meetings. I believe this is to politically embarrass Mr. Kuzamoto and to scold him, because he differs in his views regarding the way that this lawsuit's being handled. There's been a couple of things that I have spoken with Warren about with regards to the conflict or potential conflict of interest of the three sitting here in the middle, because they are named in a 1090, which is a corruption charge. Now, it's being appealed right at this point, but my concern was, if we're moving forward with people who are potentially in a position to be found corrupt with regards to the trash lawsuit, should we be in those meetings with them? Would we, by default, be found guilty also? So I don't blame Warren for not wanting to be in there and go down with the ship, as it would be. Troy, he didn't just give the letters to the press, he gave the letters to other people. I know I received one, so I think your depiction of that, to lead people to believe that Warren was just trying to showboat, I don't think that's a very true depiction of what happened. And with regards to the contribution, I am the one, and if you had any concern, and this wasn't just something to bash Warren, you could have come to me and asked me, "Hey, Jerry, who made the contribution to your campaign?" We ran as a team. Each of us got individual contributions from different people, and Warren was not the one who secured the one from Mr. DeBolt. So again, a misrepresentation to serve your purpose, which, Mayor, you're starting to lead the city, you should do what you need to do to heal this, and this whole thing is just a farce. Let's see. And I'd like to say a special hello to Mr. Brigham, who's one of the big contributors to these council members that are being named in the corruption charges, so welcome tonight. You know, years ago, we had Mr. Dean Gross, who's sitting in the audience, he's our past mayor, and Troy, you know very well, because we spoke about this personally, about him leaving closed session, going and speaking to a police officer regarding closed session issues that had to do with the moving forward of their contract. So my question to you is, if you weren't, if you're so disturbed by this breach of the Brown Act and the closed session, why did you do nothing then, when you knew for a fact, because there were other people who came to you and told you that that was what happened? Because this is merely just to injure Mr. Kuzamoto. You know, you said you wished that you could have gone to Warren and talked to him and asked him questions of why he did this. You sat here tonight and went on for probably 10, 15 minutes, and I never heard one question, just accusations. So I think that, I think that was a lie. You didn't want to ask Warren, you just are angry and you want to punish him. Setting the tone, Troy, you said, "Let's set the tone for moving forward." We had an opportunity tonight to do that, and actually, Warren supported you. I guess, Warren, you'll rethink that for next time, because now you see the true Mr. I guess my question to Marilyn is, and Troy and Ken, is, if you were so bothered by this, why did we wait three meetings? And don't tell me because Sandra couldn't come up with the information soon enough, because that's just, that's just a lie also. You know, Ken, you talked about, you were concerned about the donations that Warren took, and I could see why you would feel that way. But what I'm more concerned about is the donations that these council members took from the trash industry and then voted on the trash contract, which led to a lawsuit, which has now led to us being in a lot of trouble. And so if you want to be concerned about donations, you might want to be concerned about your own before you're concerned about others. As far as confidentiality, the same accusations were made with regards to me being in the closed session. I don't discuss closed session. I don't discuss it with my husband, I don't discuss it with my friends, I don't discuss it with anyone other than these council members, only in an appropriate setting. So for the jump to make you believe that Warren is going to discuss these things outside of closed session that are direct and specific to the items that were brought up, he's never done it before. I don't think that these things will be found by the FPPC to be specific enough to be punishable. And so I would just like to say to you, Warren, I'm sorry that you're having to go through this, but anytime you challenge Mr. Brigham, or you challenge Mr. Edgar, this is the kind of treatment you get. You get bullied, you get punished, and you get politically humiliated. And the fact of the matter is, Troy, we're stronger than you, so we're going to be okay. And I'll go ahead and pass it back to you.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
Yes, I do have one, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
So in light of this upcoming investigation, I would like to request legal counsel.
City Attorney, do you have a comment to that? I have no idea what is right would be in that type of situation.
Again, I'll analyze it and give you a response. I don't want to answer off the top of my head either.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to have the city attorney do an evaluation on the Brown Act violation for potential litigation, and to bring it back into, I guess the open issue is bring it back into open session or closed session. Is there any preference?
I think we should do it in open.
And I would like to have it in open session.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I'd like to make a substitute motion that we include the allegations for the Brown Act violation on Mr. Gross at the same time.
That's not an item on the agenda, so we'll stick with the original motion.
We're asking to agendize it for future, so we can add that, can't we?
We're talking about the item that's on the agenda tonight, and we're going to stay with the item on the agenda, so if you want to amend your substitute motion to not include the Mayor Gross issue, then you can do that, but I'm not going to accept it.
No, no. But what I will do is, I'll mention it in my council comments.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead, that was the motion. Do I have a second?
I made a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Let it be in open session.
Let it be in open session, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay, abstain.
All abstain.
Okay, that concludes the items that we had on the agenda for tonight. We're going to go to the next item, items from city manager?
Nothing.
Nothing?
What about council, initiated business?
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right.
I didn't know if you wanted to defer it or not.
Items from the city council? Start with Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to bring up, I know Jeff, this is probably your last meeting, so Angie, I'd like to address this to you. I've had some businesses that are restaurants come to me concerned about the food trucks, and I know it's something that we did for a short time that was going to be a real fun thing for the community, but these businesses in Los Alamitos are feeling the heat, and they are asking that we put an end to the food trucks, because it's impacting their ability to do business, and they have an overhead, their concerns were, "We don't make any money off the food trucks, we do make money off of the other businesses," so they're asking for our support. Also, the concern about drinking came up again. Someone said that they saw an adult purchase an alcoholic beverage and, you know, take it off over into the crowd and hand it off to someone who was too young. I can't say that that's a fact, but that's just what their concern was. So I'd like to have that agendized for us to deal with the food trucks on behalf of the businesses of Los Alamitos. And Angie, did we get a chance to get that pool heater in yet?
Councilmember Mejia, yes, the pool heater has been installed.
Great, congratulations. They'll be very happy to have that. I wanted to say congratulations to Patty and Wink again. They've been going into a neighborhood, Rossmore Highlands, and they've been doing some disaster preparedness, which I've been working on myself, so I just wanted to say thank you to them for looking out for their neighbors and helping them prepare for, God forbid, there be some kind of a catastrophic event that would happen, and they'll be prepared and be able to take care of each other better, and I just think that's very commendable, and that's why I asked for them to be brought forward tonight. City manager, the overlay zone with the general plan, I'd like to see if we can agendize that. And for people who have elderly, the gal from, I believe it was, was it Acacia that came earlier tonight, Acacia? If you have any concerns about adult care, this facility sounds like it does some great work, and if you're interested, their number is 714-530-1566. And I would also like to have agendized at the next meeting, and I would like it addressed with the same fervor that we're addressing this past item on 10B, that we agendize the same kind of situation to pursue the Brown Act violation by Mr. Gross. And with that, I wish everyone a happy holiday, and thank you for all coming tonight.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kuzamoto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I want to say on this whole issue of 10B, so I thought it was appropriate, I, in my heart of hearts, and after powerful thought, I thought I was doing the best for the city, and I'm sorry that it has such a negative repercussions, certainly was not my intent. Do I regret it happened? No, I don't regret it happened. I did what I did, I did it with full knowledge. Did I commit Brown Act violations? I don't think so. I, you know, I was very careful in what I communicated, so it is what it is. And I guess I'm very, I guess I'm disappointed with all of us up here. It was a chance, I think, to move forward, you know, to do the mea culpa, the do-overs, the "Let's really heal this thing," but I can see that it's not going to heal. It's not going to heal this year. It's going to get very, very contentious, it's going to be very interesting, I think, for this coming year, as we look at 2012. So with that said, you know, I think, you know, certainly there's some insinuations and some allegations and some accusations, and I can say that I have no problem with it being in open, because I did not do any of those, and I'm fully assured that we'll see that. And I think it's going to be rather unfortunate, because what's going to stir up are all the other past issues that caused us to be where we're at. The allegations that were in the third cause, the 1090 violations, those are going to get all mixed into this, and we don't really need that, folks. I mean, you know, the judge himself had indicated, as I read the transcripts, that would take a quantum galactic leap to say there's a corruption charge. So yet, we're going to go and rehash that, and that's the unfortunate part. Okay, on the, as far as what's been going on in the city, it's been rather quiet for me, school is out for my youngest child, so that's kind of, sort of a relief. We're getting ready for the holidays. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Poe.
Thank you. I also was very happy to see the ladies from the Acacia Adult Care Center here this evening. We did not expect that. Many of you may not know that, oh, probably about five years ago, maybe longer than that, there was an extension of that in Cypress, and I participated in that. It's just a wonderful, wonderful program. Unfortunately, because of lack of funding, just like a lot of different programs, the one in Cypress was only open about three, I think, three to four years, and then it finally had to close. And that was unfortunate, because it was close to our community, so that people in our community could use it. But it's a wonderful program, and I'm very glad that they came and brought that information here. I also want to say thanks to Forgettin', the sign changed on the, going on, on Cotella, the one that said "merge."
I give David, Stephen all the credit.
It was, you know, it was comical, it was comical, but it could have been very, very dangerous if somebody really did what it said. So thanks for getting that taken care of. On last Tuesday, December the 13th, we had the annual commissioners' dinner. We like to show the commissioners our thank you and our gratitude for the volunteer work that they do. When you are on a commission, when you're appointed to a commission, it's totally volunteer. You don't get paid for that, and, you know, their agendas are as big as ours on the different commissions, and they do a great service for our community. So we try to have a dinner every year, so that we can have some fun and let all the commissioners know, you know, that we really appreciate them and we value the time that they give to our community. Jeff, I don't know, I can't get emotional about this, but you know that I, for one, have just really appreciated all that you've done for us. We've really, even with all the dissension and all the conversation about trash, that's the only dissension that we really have, we've really done, in your tenure here, we've really done some really good things for this city. Really, you know, with the budget, you were able to take what we got from the trash contract, and, you know, that really helped... helped to really deal with our budget issues. We don't have the budget issues that other cities have, and I think that your being able to work with our staff and come up with that was really a good thing for our community. We've done a lot of good things. We had a great 50th anniversary year that you played a part in, and it's been a real pleasure to get to know you. And I don't, I'm mad at you. You know I'm mad at you, but I don't, I can't be mad too long because everyone needs to do what's best for their family and, you know, just go a little bit further down that career path. And you definitely, your mentoring of internal people in our, gave us Angie. So, we're so fortunate. And Angie, congratulations. I wasn't here at the meeting, and I want to thank Sandy for giving a comment about my support. I know that you're going to do, you're going to follow, he's got big feet, but you're going to do fine, and we're really appreciative of that. And to be able to promote from within is a huge, huge thing. And without Jeff's mentorship, I don't know that we would have been able to do that. So, I really, I really do want to thank you and congratulate you, Angie. You know, we just had an item here that's very, very hurtful in the community, and once again, we just keep going back to this. We've got accusations that are absolutely not true. Jerry knows that we did not receive money, that I didn't receive money from Brigham and, and it just keeps coming out there. So, you know, that's sad. That's really very sad. Lastly, I would just like to wish every resident in our community, business, everyone, a very Merry Christmas. And to those who do not celebrate Christmas, Happy Holiday in however you celebrate. This is the holiday season, and I really want everyone to be safe. You know, it's the time of the year when there are accidents and so on and so forth, and, you know, we go to parties and maybe have, get a little bit too celebratory at the parties, and maybe drink and drive. And so, I just wish everyone to be really safe and have a really good holiday. So, with that.
Great, thank you. Okay, my turn. Couple things. I just want to give the community a couple thoughts for 2012, and some of the things that I'm hoping that, as a city council, that we could look at and try to achieve. You know, the first item around kind of taxpayer protection and key city services is I just want to make sure that we are focused as a council in ensuring Angie's success. It's interesting that this is the same position I had when Jeff came in. And, you know, it's a tremendous amount of effort to not only just be the person in a ceremonial position as the mayor, but also to kind of be somebody that works very closely with the city manager and tries to ensure success and move and steer through the banana peels that are going to be ahead. So, I just wanted to say, for my time personally, I definitely will be committing Angie to be as helpful as I can be. So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have an agenda item put on the first January meeting. I want to return our city council or take our city council to be a true volunteer organization. I want to put on the agenda the elimination of the city council's stipend going forward, and I want to have a discussion about that as a policy, and potentially on boards and any of the commissions that we serve in. Obviously, we can't have the folks basically not take the stipend, but I know for myself, I'd like to go forward and really try to see if we can lead on this one. And we've asked a tremendous amount for our city staff. We continue to do it. Anything that we can help save for our community, I think is very important to kind of put a step forward. You know, a couple of years ago, we stepped up and we took a 10% reduction, you know, for the betterment of the community. I think it's just the right thing to do. Also, again, around kind of key city services, although we didn't have the poll voted on Maryland when you were out of town, something that came out of that that I thought was very important was to get a benchmark on our services and the quality of life in our community to kind of help us make the tougher decisions coming up in June when we have to sit down and go through our budget workshops. I don't know if spending $15,000 on a poll was the right decision or not, and like I said, Maryland, you didn't have a chance to vote on that, but I definitely am interested in finding a way, cost-effective way. And so, something I would ask, you know, Angie, yourself as the incoming city manager, I'd like to put on the, an agenda item in sometime in January, early February, the opportunity to talk about benchmarking our community. I would invite you to get ahold of Alice Jemse, who seems to be the historian for those surveys in the past, and might be able to help. You know, we did, when we looked at the sign, "In God We Trust," we did a survey online, the internet, that, you know, we, that got feedback, 90% overwhelming approval that we needed to have that sign. But it was a very cost-effective way. It took a few minutes, an hour or so maybe, to configure an online survey, and we got a lot of comments. In the past, we've had walkout surveys where people can go out and basically go through. But I think as a council, trying to set policy, that it would be nice to try to shape a survey of what are some of the items that the city council cares about. I'd also like to explore for an agenda item in the first quarter of 2012, what I'm going to call the home improvement fees holiday, which would be to provide, you know, three to six months of basically any resident that wanted to do home improvements to try to see if we could waive the fees from the city side to try and encourage building and home improvement that would help our businesses like Genal and some of the other improvement hardware shops in town that we can try to encourage, you know, some city pride and home pride. And I'd like to see that. On the economic development and revitalization, you know, I will pick up where Ken left off. I want to continue to push ahead with the general plan update. There's a lot of community outreach that's coming, and that's something that I think that as a council, you know, we took a path for our general plan fiscally that, you know, we could have paid $1.8 million and had somebody just do it. And what we chose is to engage our planning commission, to engage the city staff, and to try to involve the community and do more of a community-based general plan update. And that brought the 1.8 down to $535,000. I think that as a council, we should try to have some sort of joint meetings with the planning commission, get a status update on the general plan, how's it going, what's the feedback that we're getting. You know, some of the ideas that were brought up earlier, potentially to look at the overlay, I think is something that we really need to take into consideration and get community input on before we get going too far down that. Again, I would like to see this year a restart of the downtown revitalization project and where it left off, and I'd like to personally push and strive for all council members' involvement on that. We had folks that potentially have conflicts had, you know, but I would like to do maybe a little bit more due diligence and really explore the conflicts in a more level of detail to find out just how far we have to go. It's tough when the center of our community, you know, we can't get together as a city council and try to drive the downtown revitalization and get this thing going. And we ended up at a two-two split vote, and a two-two means you don't do anything. So, we need to get everybody involved in that. Our maintaining our public safety focus, I just wanted, again, to thank Mayor Stevens and the entire city council. We've been very supportive to ensure that our police department is at full staffing. Tonight, I had the honor to watch Mayor Stevens swear in, one of our new members of the police force, and, you know, Chief Madern. I was just wondering if you could just make an introduction to the community of our new police officer?
Certainly. We were happy to hire a new police officer. His name is Sean Krogman. His first day working was today. And he comes to us from the, he's a graduate of the Golden West College Police Academy. He's also a college graduate, has his bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and he's worked for a little while in a variety of capacities with the Laguna Beach Police Department until now.
Great, thank you. Yeah. One of the items that we've talked about and that we're going to address as a city council is in the budget review for this year, is trying to go back to initiating a school resource officer in a partnership. And I've talked to the chief about this, just as a city council member, not in any other capacity, but really trying to utilize our relationship with Seal Beach and see if we can find a way to get some contribution on the city side to help us fund the school resource officer. So, that's going to be something that I think that will be really important for us. Lastly, the engagement with the community. I think that every single person that's on the council is engaged in different ways within the city. You know, I think that, you know, supporting the residents, the quality of life, the Fourth of July race on the base, the summer concerts, et cetera, are important. But I wanted to also reaffirm that for the military base specifically is that I want to pick up where Ken and Marilyn have continued, which is the mayor and elected officials group with the Joint Forces Training Base. It's a partnership with Cypress, Seal Beach, Garden Grove, Rossmore, and us, and we are able to do a lot of good stuff in coordination with the bases. They're going through a lot of transition right now. Anyway, I, you know, I would probably be remiss to acknowledge that I know that some people in the community might be concerned that I'm stepping into the role as mayor while I'm actually conducting a race for Congress right now. And I just wanted to acknowledge that definitely will be a significant amount of effort. I'll be focused on the job that I'm elected to do, not the one that I'm going after, after that. I think that the choice for the Mayor Protemp and Marilyn Poe is a perfect partnership for myself. Marilyn and I've worked a lot together over the years, and I can't think of anybody better that would be there to help pick up the ball and help me out through this year. I also wanted to thank my wife, Betty, who was here earlier this evening, and Tyler, Ethan, and Matthew, my boys. Like Ken said earlier, and all of us that would say they're up here, being on the city council is a tremendous honor, but it's also a tremendous sacrifice on the family. And I think that it takes a great partner at home and a great partnership with your entire family. And I just wanted to thank my family for supporting me through this. And lastly, and most importantly, I wanted to thank the residents of the city of Los Alamitos for giving me opportunity to serve as city council member and have the honor to serve as mayor. That's all I have. Turn it over to you, Councilmember Stevens.
I have to get used to that. Councilmember Stevens. All right. I wanted to thank Robbie Mulaney for his thank you card. He was one of the Eagle Scouts that was just promoted upward, advanced just a few weeks ago. And he sent me a thank you card, and I just wanted to publicly thank Robbie for that. Like everyone else up here, I did attend the commissioners' dinner last week, and it was great. It's always wonderful to be able to honor the people that do serve our community as true public servants. And again, they don't get anything for it, and their packets end up being sometimes bigger than ours. We go through them, and we know. And so, again, thank you for all of the, all of the people that do sit on those commissions. And I thank you to Angie for creating some excitement with the gift giveaway that she did, the trade-off of the gifts and everything else. I don't think anyone complained at all. So, good job. Well done. I also wanted to acknowledge the restriping of Lexington. I know that was brought up many times, and so, it's nice to see that has been completed also. I wanted to thank Jeff for two and a half years of service. It's been a pleasure. It's always nice to have you on speed dial. I still do. So, you may be in another city, but if I dial you by accident, answer the question anyway. As a freebie. But Jed, Jeff has really brought stability to our city staff. And prior to that, there was quite a heavy turnover. And so, it's a pleasure for all of us up here on the council to have a good, stable city staff, and then to create and mentor people that we can promote from within. There aren't too many cities around that do that. And so, hats off to the entire city staff for getting in board behind you. It's the same way that they're going to get on board with Angie. And Angie doesn't like congratulations and everything else, I know, but she's going to get another one. And she knows that she has a lot of things that she has to do, and I know she's going to do them perfectly. All the confidence in the world. I also, again, wanted to thank my wife, Rosa, and my son, Andrew, for putting up with the piles of paperwork throughout the house, for my son for holding my feet to the fire and getting a lot of things done whenever it came down to it, and for my wife for being a, being without a husband for many nights and always leaving a light in the window for me whenever we come back in at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning sometimes after these meetings. So, the, no one could ever survive on a city council without a good, loving family, a family that's concerned about the community and shoulders the load the same way that we do. So, again, thank you. And I always call her baby, so thank you, baby. I do want to wish a very happy holidays to everyone. And it's not only be safe, but I would ask everyone to be very considerate of your neighbors at this time of year. And also, help the less fortunate. We all have a chance to do it. It could be small, it could be big, it could be anything at all. But if you get an opportunity to help people that are struggling this time of year, please do it. Reach out. Help them out. If you have an extra toy that your family's not going to use, donate it. If you have anything at all that's going to help them have a better Christmas, a better holiday, help them out. It is that time of year. Outside of that, thank you. That's it.
Great, thank you. Anything from the city manager?
As you know, I'm known for long speeches at the end of these meetings. I try to pass, and I try to go anonymously, but I feel called out by Marilyn and Ken, and I have to reciprocate and say that I've, it's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure working with you. I feel we have accomplished a lot, and I've enjoyed my tenure here, and I don't regret a minute of it. My only, but I will say that I'm really excited about Angie. I think you've made a great selection. I think you're in good hands, and she's going to do well. I'm also very excited about what's happening in the staff in Recreation and Parks. I've watched those young people develop dramatically. I've watched Cory and Emlin and Ron develop in ways that have been really unseen in the last couple of years. As a tribute to Angie in that department, I'm really happy that they get a chance to step up and do good work, and I know they'll do great. And I'm really going to be interested in watching their careers unfold in the future years. So, that's something that's pretty exciting for me. And then lastly, and I mean this sincerely from my heart, I hope in the next year that you folks find peace. You're all good people. I've enjoyed working with all of you individually, and I hope there's a way to find a path to a more unified council, and that's my wish for you this year.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're going to a closed session, conference of legal counsel, city attorney. So, we're going to go ahead and take a break. We'll go into closed session and come out and adjourn the meeting when we're done. Thank you. done. Thank you.